People are, yeah, we're leaving town. We're looking for more. Yeah. We're traveling.
Yeah.
Especially on Friday, the last day of the week for the work week for most. What repercussions do you cause in what you've been balancing those two?
I probably missed that one, so. Good morning and welcome to the meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners. This meeting is now called over. Will Commissioner, staff and guests please stand for invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, thank you for another gorgeous day in Berry County. And we thank you for the rain that you shared with us over the last three or four days that have turned everything so beautifully green. Please be with us as we deliberate this morning. Help us make wise decisions for all of the county. We've got some special events going on this weekend. Please watch over those and let everyone who participates and is traveling be safe. Again, we thank you for your blessing and your guidance. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett?
Here.
Carlton?
President.
Campbell?
Here.
Getty?
Here.
Hatfield?
Here.
Smoker?
Here.
Tunison?
Here.
And Jackson?
Here. Thank you. Reports of state and county officials. Are there any state or county officials here with us this morning that would like to give an update to the board?
Well, I'm gonna need a little favor because I forgot a folder on my assistant's desk there. It should be here any second, so if you hold that thought and we'll be swearing in a couple of people for you. Oh, here we go.
He's back.
Guy is fast. Joshua Meese, Elizabeth O'Neill and Alexander Stiles, front and center. Where are they?
They still hiding outside?
Christopher Hill, why don't you come on in? Alexander Stiles, and we got Elizabeth O'Neill and Joshua Meese. These two are gonna be sworn in for corrections and this one here is gonna be doing law enforcement for us. So, we'll start with Alexander.
Yes, sir.
Put him up, front and center.
Yes, sir.
You solemnly swear or affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution for the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Deputy Sheriff in and for the City of Hastings, County of Berry and State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability. I will. Welcome aboard. Thank you, sir. What do we sign in front of the clerk over there? Joshua and Elizabeth, we can do both at the same time. Raise your hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution for the State of Michigan, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Corrections Deputy in and for the City of Hastings, County of Berry and State of Michigan, according to the best of your ability.
I do.
I will.
Thank you. I have to go get another signature over there, clerk, so.
Do we have any other state or county officials with us who would like to give an update to the board this morning? Hearing none, we will move ahead. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for any item listed on our agenda.
I'm sorry. Sure, I do have, I didn't know if the sheriff's office was done with their announcements, so I do actually have something.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry. They were still standing there, so.
And then guns, so you know.
I wasn't sure. Good morning, Patrick Jansys, Emergency Management. I just wanted to come in and talk to you guys this morning about the upcoming event. I think it was mentioned here, we have the Rock the Country this weekend. And we have upwards of 50,000 people coming into the community over the course of this weekend. And we do anticipate traffic congestion and some, we have spent extensive planning over the last six months, meeting with all of our community partners and coordinating with our neighbors, our emergency managers throughout our region here and dispatch centers and making sure that we have everything in place that we can anticipate. Obviously, we've never experienced anything like this in this community, so there's things that we don't know. We certainly have asked and drawn on the experience of the entertainment company and our peers and all of our, like I said, our emergency managers around us for some guidance on all of this, so we feel ready at this point. We're ready for it to begin. We, if you haven't driven by there, there's quite a bit of infrastructure already in place. They already have security set up. They are building out everything. They did have a little bit of a halt yesterday and some weather, but they should have a pretty good day today. There is anticipation for some weather over the weekend. Right now, it's looking like some rain on Friday, possibly some storms. That would be one of our concerns for this event is any sort of inclement weather. And then our other big concern is just the traffic congestion. We've tried to push out communications to those residents. Our central dispatch center has set up a text to rock rave alerting. We've pushed that notification out and that is 226787. So, that is for community residents to be informed, so we can get timely information out to them regarding traffic or any sort of concerns that we're experiencing. This isn't for the event itself, it is for our community and our residents. So, this is something our dispatch center put a lot of time and effort into spearheading and making sure that we could communicate with them now and then into the future as well. Any questions or comments at this time from me regarding any of the press release that went out last week?
Questions from Commissioners? Are they doing anything special with traffic inbound or outbound traffic? Because it's one lane in, it's one lane out, right? So.
I think, so we actually have, there's actually a few lanes. The biggest goal or the plan is to get them off of M-37, trying to get them off the roads and into the parking area. From there, they'll get them into their positions that they need to. And they do have parking on the south side as well. They were able to secure some additional parking space for some private landowners there in that subdivision that's just south of there. So, they, they have assured us that they have enough parking to accommodate the attendance each day and we will support them. The sheriff's office has all of their staff to support the road and for this, so again, I think we've done everything we can to plan and prepare for this and that we, yeah.
Well, I know we approved some expenditures a week or so ago for our deputies and our emergency services, so hopefully it looks like that's a well put together plan, so we will see. We can't predict the weather and we can't predict what 50,000 people looks like coming here, so you know, but.
No.
Well, there's 23,000 on Friday night and break over 25,000 on Saturday.
Correct.
Wow.
Yep. And you're scheduled to say first.
And that'll really slow traffic down a lot, so that'll, that'll get the refunds going in a hurry, so.
Are there any other questions? I think the biggest thing that we want to make sure is just to, for you guys to communicate with your constituents, to prepare ahead of time and plan for this traffic. And if they've got appointments and they've got places to be, try to figure that out ahead of time. Don't wait for the traffic to be backed up in their neighborhoods or their driveways, so.
Seek alternate routes.
Seek alternate routes and have backup plans. Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Patrick for taking the emergency management job when one of the biggest events there is comes within a year. So, thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
It's round by a black.
Yeah, there you go. Get it out of the way, right? Apparently after this, I can't say I'm new anymore.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for any item listed on our agenda. Going to cooperate this morning, okay. Approval of written agenda, at this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request, does any Commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as written. Various correspondents, does any Commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Hearing none, consent agenda, Commissioner Smoker.
I would like to move for the approval of the May 27, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Approval to dispose of the 2012 MY Ford Transit Connect VIN number NMOKS9BN7CT124170. Approval of PACE Special Assessment Agreement for the proposed project at 420 East Mill Street. And approval of the recommendation of the opioid settlement fund scoring work group, including approval to award $15,000 to the Berry County Serenity Club for partial emergency funding.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smoker, support by Hatfield, for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed and a rule call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, this morning, we have our service awards for the many fine employees of Berry County, which have hit their mark either 5, 10, and some of them way beyond that. And this is a fantastic day for us because there are so many people that are behind the scenes, working on behalf of the county, doing things, and we don't get a chance to meet them very often, so today is an opportunity for us to show our appreciation for all the people who make the county work, so with that, we will get started. Michael Farner, are you here this morning?
Yes.
There we are. Central Dispatch, would you like to chime in on this as well?
I can.
Okay, I would appreciate it if you would.
Jeff's here.
Jeff is here as well?
Yeah.
Okay. I said, Jeff, you come up here as well then, so I saw it said, Building and Grounds and Central Dispatch, so. But, Michael, we appreciate your 10 years of dedicated service given to the people of Berry County, Michigan. So, I haven't got a chance to meet you in the past, but I can tell by the bright shirt the work you've been doing and where you've been working at, so we certainly appreciate your effort, your energy to put behind the scenes to make our county a better and more beautiful place. So, with that, you'd like to go first?
Michael is a very valued member of our team. He's also a Berry County resident. We refer to him as our custodial engineer. He loves that.
There you go.
His work at dispatch is a little bit different than what he does here because there he does everything, and so most days, most weeks, he doesn't know what I'm gonna have waiting for him.
This is true.
But, yeah, he's been with us for 10 years and we're happy to have him and we want him to be around for the next 20 years.
Awesome.
Thank you, Michael.
Jeff, I'd just add that flexibility, when I think of Michael, it's flexibility. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the buildings and grounds world as well as the dispatch, but he's always willing to cover if somebody's out or something happens or, and then I'm always learning new skills that he has, and it's like, hold on, why haven't I been tapping into those skills? So, I appreciate his flexibility and his dedication.
Why don't you tell me everything? You told me to work.
Caterer, coroner, drywater.
Electrician.
So, we appreciate you very much, so.
Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Well, Michael, on behalf of a grateful county, we appreciate you and your 10 years of service. Thank you.
All right.
Is Tanya Fox here this morning? Tanya Fox?
Thank you.
I do not see Tanya. How about Ms. Lori Marquardt? Marquardt? Marquardt. Good morning, Lori. This is a special one. 30 years of service. Can you believe it went by that fast?
No, doesn't.
But every day, same job, showing up, supporting the county, supporting the people around you. Obviously, this last year's been a little more challenging than some others with the transition.
Little bit.
And I can't tell you how much we appreciate your input, being able to reach out and talk to your Commissioners and let us know when there's issues, but.
I probably don't like seeing you, but. Oh, no, it's not her again.
It's good to know what's going on, so, but we appreciate all you've done over 30 years. That's an amazing career and we appreciate you continuing, I mean, only 30 more, so.
Oh, no, yeah, no, 30 more, yeah.
Anyways, on behalf of a grateful Berry County, we appreciate your 30 years of service. That's a very special milestone that very few people will accomplish, but thank you.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Travis Moore here this morning?
Yes, sir.
I had a note that he was gonna be unable to attend, so. Gary Pearson. Sheriff Leef, if you would like to also step up, that would be great. Another special one, Gary Pearson, Deputy Sheriff, I know he takes care of our courts for us, and another 30-year award. So, does it seem like 30 years?
Just grateful.
Absolutely. Well, we're grateful to have you and your talents and your oversight, keeping, keeping safe, keeping us safe over there with all the interesting things that go through the courts and law, so I mean, 30 years is a long time. Sheriff Leef?
Courts and law, not only did you start the city of Potterville, right?
Yep, started in Nashville, then went to the city of Potterville and the sheriff's office.
You're part of Gene Coogee's group there for you guys, just not to date myself or anything, but then you started here at the Berry County Sheriff's Office. You worked on the drug team, you worked school liaison, court, obviously. I mean, you did a plethora of things here through the Sheriff's Office, and he's very thorough, and if you want something done and you want it done correctly and with integrity, this is Gary, your go-to guy, so. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Sheriff.
30 years of service, that is fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
On behalf of a grateful Berry County, thank you. Christine?
She's here.
She is not here, okay. Levi Yonkers. Levi is celebrating his five-year anniversary with Berry County. Thank you. We appreciate your service to the county and all that you've done. You still look young, ambitious and ready to go.
Thank you.
He's still thin. He's still thin, yeah.
Levi started with us, you might recognize Yonkers' last name, his dad was a long-time deputy with us. He's not only deputy, but he also was on our tactical team and, oh, just tactical team, isn't he?
Drone dive.
Oh, drone, dive team, that's right. He also, right now, has assigned up to Village of Middleville, and appreciate having him stick around and give us his good work, Mr.
Yeah, the drone team, the dive team, that'll keep you busy. That drone has been a great technology for the county, so.
Well, the dive team, you should see where it was to where it is today, so he's part of the group to help build that up.
We appreciate your 5 years of service, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Lawrence Green with Animal Control.
Hardest working deputy in the county.
There we go. Congratulations on your 10-year anniversary with the county. We certainly appreciate your service. I mean, you have an interesting job. You never know what's coming at you on a day-to-day basis, I imagine, so you know.
That's for sure.
I hate to know how many times you've been bitten or almost bitten, but you know, hopefully zero is the right number, but I don't know.
I've never been.
Never been? Well, the future's bright, the future's bright. Anything you'd like to add, Sheriff?
10 years ago, you stole him from Eaton County in one of the best moves we've made here, especially when it comes to animal control. When you do animal control, there's a whole bunch of avenues you can take. You got inspections, you got bites, you got complaints for dog barking and farms. I mean, there's just so much to that position here and he's our lone wolf handling it all, so Larry, I appreciate you coming on out and working these 10 years for us, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Larry.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thomas Harold Jr. Good morning, congratulations for 10 years of service with Berry County. Just to let you know, we appreciate your service, especially all you do for the county and keeping us safe out there. Sheriff?
Hi, Harold's a deputy, became a sergeant at a pretty young age, and he's been nice for a while, and he's working day shift for us and kind of keeping the courts organized, plus everything that's going on out in the law enforcement community outside of the courts. There's days when we might have one or two people patrolling 576 square miles in the daytime because we got duties inside the court, and he helps coordinate all that, so appreciate your work and effort.
Absolutely. Well, we appreciate your 10 years of service and hope you have another successful 10 years with us and be safe this weekend if you get to be on patrol out there. You get free tickets, right?
I'm stuck on the road.
You're stuck on the road, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
There you go. Janet Mackey. Is Janet here this morning?
She's a primary detective sergeant, so I'm sure she's up to her armpits of work that she has done, everything from these homicide cases we got coming up, she's our lead detective on that, and no, I couldn't tell you how many child-type cases that she handles in a year, it's just unbelievable, so she's got her 25 years in and I had to speak up for her there because she's always, always busy, so.
25 years, fantastic. Okay, we'll be sure to get those to her. Benjamin Strimback. Good morning, Benjamin. Congratulations, 10 years of service with our Parks and Rec Department. We appreciate you, you are definitely one of the behind-the-scenes guys who keep everything running and moving and going in the right direction, so Dan?
Yeah, no, Ben, a lifelong resident of Berry County, obviously takes a lot of pride in his job. If you've been to Charlton Park and seen how, you know, wonderful it's kept, what the grounds look like, obviously the maintenance and upkeep there, Ben's responsible for all of it, and certainly does a great job for us as a department, but maybe more importantly just in representing Berry County, honestly, tremendous job.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Well, we're grateful Berry County, we appreciate all you do, thank you for your 10 years of service. Thank you.
And he will celebrate on Sunday with like 6,000 or 7,000 if his closest. Thank you.
Where is Tanya? There we go. Tanya, congratulations on your 10 years of service with Berry County. We certainly appreciate your time and effort making everything work behind the scenes like that. And Daisy, if you'd like to add some?
Of course, yes. Tanya came to us as a receptionist and she very quickly showed her potential and worked her way up to office manager, and she has done nothing but set a great example for customer service and turning around, you know, what used to be a really bad image of the front of the court, of course, I don't know, will ever be up there with, you know, you know how it is. But, you know, making it a welcoming place for people to come and resolve their issues and not so adversarial because she explains that wonderful example for everybody that she trains and brings into our office, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you for the kind words.
We are fortunate to have you, we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir.
Congratulations on your 10 years.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, but.
No, that's no problem.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, we will conclude these and get the rest of these out as needed when we see traffic or something else. Those are all the folks that keep the county moving, right there.
They're all leaving.
And they're all leaving. We gotta get back to work.
We gotta go to work.
Items for consideration, Commissioner Bassett?
Yes, under items for consideration, we have several items to approve. I make a motion to approve prepaid invoices in the amount of $2,739,935.88.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Bassett, support by Hatfield, for approval of claims in the amount of $52,933.88. Discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I make a motion to approve claims in the amount of $52,933.88.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Bassett, support by Hatfield, for approval of claims in the amount of $52,933.88. Discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved.
I make a motion to approve claims in the amount of $52,933.88.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Bassett, support by Hatfield, for approval of claims in the amount of $52,933.88. Discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report? We have none. Chairperson's report? We're just at the start of our meeting cycle, so I am all set. Vice Chairperson's report?
Lighter.
Commissioner reports, Commissioner Bassett?
I did attend the Orangeville Township meeting last week, and then also the Public Safety Project kickoff, which was, I thought, a very good meeting, very good representation of a broad, broad group of people, had really good dialogue on that. And then this week, looking forward to Berry County Community Mental Health in Yankee Springs.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlton?
Attended Maple Grove, Castleton, Woodland Village, got Woodland Township tonight and Nashville on Thursday.
Thank you. Commissioner Getty?
Kind of Thornapple Township last night, they brought in, I think, five new firefighters to the emergency services and then some promotions of some others, so really doing a nice job and bringing young folks into the department.
And do tell about our wonderful dedication we had on Saturday.
So, we had the Bailey Nature Preserve dedication and we probably had 30 or so people there that really well attended, the weather certainly cooperated, I can't think of a better forecast that we had, and I think the biggest, I guess, demonstration of how important it was to the family, excuse me, is that David.
Motion by Bassett, support by Gaddy for approval of commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $674.97. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Gaddy.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Snoker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators report? We have none. Chairperson's report? We're just at the start of our, our meeting cycle, so I am all set. Vice Chairperson's report?
My life.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bassett?
I did attend the Orangeville Township meeting last week, and then also the, the Public Safety Project kickoff, which was, I thought, a very good meeting, very good representation of a broad, broad group of people, had really good dialogue on that. And then this week, looking forward to Berry County Community Mental Health in Yankee Springs.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlton?
Attended Maple Grove, Castleton, Woodland Village, Woodland Township tonight, and Nashville on Thursday.
Thank you. Commissioner Gaddy?
Attended Thornapple Township last night. They brought in, I think, five new firefighters to the emergency services, and, and then some promotions of some others, so really doing a nice job and bringing young folks into the department.
And do tell about our wonderful dedication we had on Saturday.
So we had the Bailey Nature Preserve dedication, and we probably had 30 or so people there that really well-attended. The, the weather certainly cooperated. I can't think of a, a better forecast that we had, and, and I think the biggest, I guess, demonstration of how important it was to the family, excuse me, is that, is that David Bailey, who, who really made the, the financial stability of the project work, he wasn't able to attend from Montana, but his two daughters came, one from Alaska and one from St. Paul, Minnesota, and they brought his grandson as well. It was a cousin there. But the, the extraordinary effort that it took for those grandchildren of the original donors to be present at the public dedication, I, I think demonstrates how important it is to the family. And then we just had so many people come from, from neighbors in, in the township, and, and one council member from the Village of Midville that drove all the way there. It's over 45 minutes from, from us that are on the other side of the county. It really, I think, shows how important these public spaces are to people in Berry County.
And I think for those of us, like, I don't know how many of you got a chance to walk it, like Bruce and I did with Catherine, to see what it was a few years ago to what it's already turned into with the investment, just in the parking lot and the kiosk and the trails being wider. I mean, it just has transitioned into a very beautiful space. And listening to the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy gentlemen talk about the importance of that piece of property in the watershed and how that is a filter for that entire area was really impressive to think that, that's being preserved and protected and it's become a nature area for everybody to enjoy in Berry County. So that's going to be a special place as it gets a little more press out there, so.
Right.
Great job, Catherine, driving, driving that vision and driving us around through the tics and the swamp and everything else to see it, but you accomplished it.
And, and now you guys can, to, to be, to testify to how the trail has improved, and it's nothing like what it was for those first trips out there. I think even Commissioner Snoker might enjoy a walk along the lake there.
Yeah. I'll go again if they had those cookies. Those were fantastic, so, you know.
You know, I came back after my kayak trip, and there, there was not, not quite the assortment there was when I left.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Snoker?
Attended Thornapple with Catherine in Freeport last night, and Irving is next week.
Okay. Commissioner Tunison?
Attended Carlton last night. I think I need to give a shout out to the both supervisors at Carlton and the Hastings Charter, Jim Partridge and Brad Cartman for being proactive on their vision that we could possibly lose our ambulance service in, in Berry County for Mercy. And when their contract is up, I think the assignment is kind of, they might not remain here. They might try to sell their business or just close the doors because it's, they're losing money. They've gone to each of the five townships and asked for some reimbursement of, of help financially. Some of them have, some of them haven't. But the movement now is that they're trying to get all five townships to kick in $20,000 towards an purchase of a used ambulance. Mark Jordan, the fire chief, really keyed behind this too, so that they can be prepared for the future and to help out with calls right now, first responder calls. So I think it's pretty cool that they're being proactive on this and trying to get something set up before something happens to our ambulance service here in Berry County. So I want to give a shout out to the, both of them for, well, I shouldn't just say them, but they're reading the, the charge, let's put it that way, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I attended Syria Township last night. Also was over there on Saturday. They had an open house. They just remodeled out there in Syria. If you get a chance to stop and see it sometime, they did a beautiful job of maintaining the historical ambiance of the place. It, it looks like something that could have been done 100 years ago, but, but it's beautiful. They did a great job out there. Also went over to the Nature, Bailey Nature Center. Catherine and Dan and the rest of the Parks Commission, Daryl's worked hard out there. It really is a, it's an amazing, beautiful piece of property inside Berry County, and we, we won't feel the full effects of it, but 100 years from our offsprings and our generations to come, there's not going to be those places, and that's going to be one that's going to be there, and it'll always be there. Tonight, I'm going to go visit Baltimore and Johnstown, and I'm sure we'll talk about solar fields, so. Anybody's welcome to attend.
Thank you. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to
Good morning. I'm Greg Taylor with Copper Rock Construction and Development. I just wanted to say thank you to the, the board for your support this morning on the PACE financing. Happy to report that we have everything in place, including some state incentives that were actually finally approved yesterday, which were, was a long path through the woods, but we're happy to have support there as well. You'll be seeing an increase of activity on the site starting immediately. The remaining warehouse facility will probably be demolished in the next two weeks. We also, all will be receiving an invitation through email for a groundbreaking ceremony on the 1st of July, in the morning of, of July 1st, and so please look forward to that. And all we want to do beyond executing on this project and adding to the community is to thank you again for your support and let you know that we're proud to be associated with Berry County and with Hastings. We say this very frequently, this, it's been a breath of fresh air to work with your community, and we appreciate the reception and the patience that you've given to us as we've worked on this project over the last couple of years and for the foreseeable future going forward, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We look forward to it.
Breath of fresh air. You must be a farmer. Mercy Ambulance, I used to work for them back in 1988, not to date myself, but it's one of those businesses too, where you start talking about paramedics, it doesn't pay very well. And they're like everybody else, having a hard time recruiting and keeping people. And once you get to that paramedic level, usually the hospitals try and recruit you because you, they know you can pass a very tough exam. So I encourage you guys to do what you can to see about keeping these ambulances around here. It's not getting any cheaper, and they're like us, they're battling to keep their employees. Best gig I ever had was a Michigan, Michigan State game. I was on the field amongst the players. It was the year that Michigan State won the Hose Bowl with Lorenzo White, and there was McAllister as a quarterback for Michigan on the other side, and I almost got run over by McAllister and Banks on the sidelines there. People behind me told me, hey, get down, because I was right there on the 50-yard line amongst the players. I knelt down, noticed when I knelt down, and here they come both running at me, and they say, oh, they had these two big tree trunks picking me up, moving me out of the way. And one of them says, hey, we need to keep you because you're here for us. And it was pretty funny, and I says, yeah, good thing you moved me, I didn't want to hurt them. And I think we had a good chuckle out of it. But, yeah, if you guys do what you can to keep Mercy going here, I would appreciate it too, so thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none.